All right, it's nine o'clock. Would you please stand and we will have our emigration led by Commissioner Phillips and our pledges to the American flag.
If you'll all bow with me, please. Our heavenly Father, we pence time just thank you for the opportunity to get here today, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you show us the direction that we should lead this community in County in in your way, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you be with each and every one of us as we make them decisions and we go into the business of your county, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you forgive us of our many sins and watch over us and guide us each day. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Meeting to order at nine oh one and we do have a quorum. All commissioners and myself are present. Item number two, general announcements. All right, Jessica? Do you have retiree awards? You do not? Okay. Then next would be Mr. Watson. You're up.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Your Honor. Standing with commissioners. I'm Leon Watson, Ag, Ag and Natural Resources County Agent for Anzay County. And if I could take just a minute while I'm here to give you a brief update on some of the things that's going on in our programs and in our office. We've been working with several producers in the county, helping them get their pesticide license at several multi-county meetings. I think maybe a couple of you have been in the sentence, but anyway, that's going very well. Majors are kind of slowing down right now, but we've had numerous four H members participate in major livestock shows. I think Austin's going to finish up here this weekend. We've got several new landowners coming into Vansay County and they're ringing our phone wanting assistance on various ways to to make their land profitable or productive. So that's ongoing. I'd like to invite all of you to our county fair next week. I'm sure most of you know about that, but a lot of our four Hers and the FFA members in the county are going to be participating in that, highlighting their projects for the year. And then we got our sale on Friday of next week. Couple of things coming up. May 2nd, we've got our Upper Supreme Cal Cap Conference. Be held at Gabriel Ranch out at Grand Celine. And then we've implemented a kind of a unique opportunity. I've got a couple of folks in the county that are wanting to sponsor in the state planning program. And we have Tiffany Dowell Schmidt from A and M coming and it's old Graham from Farm Bureau. That'll be on July 9th. I know it's a Wednesday night, but we had to take Tiffany when she was available. So those are some things coming up in the future. Why I'm really here this morning is to present a certificate of participation with Texas A and M Agri Life Extension Service for words this certificate to Brandon Barton for successfully completing hours of educational training during the District Four County Judges and Commissioners Conference. Could I approach the presentation?
Let him come down there and so we can get a.
Yeah, you know what? What's there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. I have two other announcements. One is the debris pickup started first of this month as far as the trees on the side of the road in precinct two. And so far, we have picked up over four thousand cubic yards of debris and dumped them at a site down on highway nineteen. And it will be continuing on precinct two and hopefully we'll have it done in another two week, week or two weeks. And then we will be moving over to precinct four and to work on that. So I don't know how long it's going to take for the rest of the precinct. Precinct two is the one that had the most debris. That's why we started on it. So anyway. And then the other item that I'd like to announce is that our fire marshal has issued an order to Tulare Energy concerning their, their construction down in precinct two. And Tana, can you, would you be willing or do you want me to read the?
Do you want me to describe what the order does?
Yes, yeah, what's the order?
So it's an order to comply that was issued by the fire marshal in accordance with the local government code that gives them official notice of what they have failed to do. They did respond to our original eight fifty-five letter with information. However, that information included failed tests and did not include some of the required tests. So he has followed that up now with an official order to comply that lists the things that that must be done. If they fail to do those, we are prepared to go with what the next step is under the law.
Okay, thank you. Or any other more general announcements? If not, are there any public comments? Yes, sir. You may. I don't believe you filled out a form.
You know what? I filled out enough forms in my time, Judge. Members of the court, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for indulging me for just a moment. I have the bittersweet task this moment of recognizing my retired court reporter. Come up here. I say bittersweet, it's bitter insofar as she is going to be mad at me for the rest of her remaining week. I say bitter because our county is losing someone who has more corporate experience, more corporate time logged than probably any other person in this world. Now, how she learned the magic and the wizardry of what she does with that little magic box there in front of her at age four, I don't know. But as she leaves us this week, she leaves behind forty years of service both to Vansay County and to the great state of Texas. It is a loss to us as a part of the judicial system. It's a loss to us as employee here in county. It's a loss to us here in the CCL because especially I count you as one of the very few number of people that I consider to be a brand. There are a few people and you folks in this room know especially right now better than any other. We work in an adversarial system. There's always adversarial. But when you add the element of politics to it, the knives are always out. They're not on your back somewhere. And so it is a unique and rare thing to find and have someone within whom you can talk, you can confide. And sometimes you can say, do you believe what those people just told us? It's a, it's a bitter moment. On the other hand, there is a sweet element to it. Sweet element is this. She does get the opportunity now to go spend some time and enjoy her retirement days. She's got a great husband who's also a good friend of mine, but I think he's going to try to make use of her in small practice. And then the last element is there's just a little sweet touch of fact that out of all the judges she served with, I'm the one that got to break her. It is my privilege, Becky Wheeler, to present you with this on behalf of Anzay County. I'll read it just so it's a part of our record here. This plaque is presented to Becky Wheeler CSR in recognition of forty years of dedicated and outstanding service to the citizens of Anzay County and the state of Texas.
This way.
All right, are there any other general announcements? Or public comments, actually, is what that was. All right. We'll move on to item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda are those items that are considered routine by the commissioner's court will be enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion unless one of the commissioners or county judge asked to have any item removed or discussed. Is there any items that need to be removed or discussed? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, Commissioner Phillips makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Say my. Commissioner.
Curtis.
Curtis.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number five, discuss considered youth diversion coordinator position and granting authority to the youth diversion board to determine whether and when the youth diversion coordinator will be a full-time or part-time position. Okay?
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of Judge Shin, who is the chairman of the youth diversion board. He is at a training this week, so he asked me, I'm a member of that board, he asked me to talk about this agenda item with you. As you know, the youth diversion coordinator position is a position that the state has mandated that we have. And so Judge Shin has taken the reins of establishing that position in the county and his part-time clerk, Jennifer Taylor, has been serving in that position on a part, on a part-time basis. The commissioner's court has granted the funding for us to hire a full-time youth diversion coordinator. And ultimately, we will need to do that. The money that the court has set aside in the budget is under a line item for full-time youth diversion coordinator. And ultimately, we will need a full-time employee, but because this program is just starting and getting ramped up and it has taken off in greater numbers than than we expected. But we are not quite ready for a full-time employee yet. We want to maintain it as a part-time employee for a little while longer. But because of the way the money, the line item that the money was put into and and how the budget was worded, we are unable to do that with HR and the auditor because it says full-time position. So what we're asking is that the court approve using the money that's in the full-time line item to pay our part-time until, and and then when the youth diversion board is ready to call it a full-time position, when the, when the work warrants, we don't want to pay somebody to sit around, when the work warrants having a full-time, then the youth diversion board can transfer it from or can transform it from a part-time to a full-time position. So that's all we're asking for. It's just kind of a technical thing because the money is in a full-time line item. We're asking to be able to leave the position as part-time for now. Use that money in that line item to pay it at the rate approved. I believe it's nineteen sixty-six, maybe an hour, nineteen what? Nineteen forty-four an hour. And then ultimately let the youth diversion board decide if and when it needs to go to a full-time position. And obviously, this will be a savings for the county as well because as long as it's a part-time position, we aren't paying benefits.
This might come with that grant, correct?
No, this money is the bridge between now and when the grant starts. The grant was approved, but that grant doesn't start till the budget, the state budget year in the fall like always.
We have it under a line item for full-time?
Yes, sir.
And we need to to transfer that?
We need to, we need to authorize payment to the position, whether it's full-time or part-time.
From that line?
From that line item.
So basically, can we just change the wording to full or part-time?
Yeah, what do we need, Catherine? What does the, what does the auditor's department need in order to pay a part-time employee?
Well, we, we need it to be set up as a part-time position versus a full-time position. One of the issues that I've had as well as with the grants, the application is actually, is written at ninety dollars and forty-four cents per hour for a full-time position for eight hours a week. And the issue that this all kind of came up is because human resources and myself, we did not allow it to go through, but the part-time position was trying to be put in at thirty-two dollars an hour, which is not in agreement with how the grant's application is written. And you know, I'm just asking that the purview continue to go through the regular process where the court approves part-time, full-time positions. And for the raise, we do it in agreement with the budget, but the budget is going to be suspended in the short.
But we don't have a lot, we don't have a line item for a part-time. So do we need?
Not do. Had to farm.
In nineteen forty-four an hour, we're not, that is the salary and we're not asking to change that. Nineteen forty-four an hour from, from the county's budget.
But can we play part-time out of that line item?
No.
So we have to, so what do we need to do? Like, we didn't, do we need to create a line item?
Can we just transfer it over to part-time from full-time?
And what we're asking is that the juvenile board be allowed to determine when it, diversion board, I'm sorry, youth diversion board be allowed to determine when it goes from part-time to full-time. No change in pay rate, nineteen forty-four an hour. All of that, it's just, it, it seems to us that we're trying to give the county an opportunity to save money. They've set aside fifty thousand dollars to, to pay this until the fall. They, y'all were good to Judge Shin when he asked for a full-time position. But we don't need that this week. We might need it next week. We might need it in a month, but what we want to do is take that fifty thousand dollars and pay the nineteen forty-four an hour for twenty-four hours a week until such point as we need it for forty hours a week. So it seems to us we basked for forty hours a week and granted forty hours a week. We don't need all of that. We just need permission to only use part of it till we need it all.
But, but am I understanding it right the way you? I, I heard, this is what I heard you say.
Okay.
You're, you're asking that the board be able to come back if it's needed to be changed to full-time without having to come back to us?
Yes, sir. Because the work may.
We don't know when it's going to change.
Right, right.
And the, and the pay won't change. When it goes full-time, will, will the pay still going to be nineteen?
Yes.
Just need to have the grant process, you know, put into place where the grant applications approved in nineteen forty-four hour for a part-time position. Right now, the application is in at nineteen forty-four hour for a full-time forty-hour a week position. So if they, that's all part of this process. They're looking at it from that perspective that this is a full-time position.
I spoke with Stephanie Hefner at ETCOG, who is over the grants for the county. And this is a reimbursement grant. So if we, it's the same as if, let's say, we hired a full-time and they quit. And we went a month before we had a new person, then we don't get reimbursed because we didn't use the money. If we, if we, the grant allows us to have up to a full-time. If we only use someone twenty-four hours a week instead of forty, we don't submit forty because we didn't use forty, we submit twenty-four and they're reimbursed for twenty-four. We can't go over, but we can always go under.
Is it twenty-four or thirty-two?
Right now, the, the youth diversion board is at twenty-four, but yes, the, the legal would be thirty.
So could we get through all the legalities, make it part-time like it is in the line item for now? And then come budget season, make that line item full-time for October and from my understanding, the way the part-time works is you may work forty-two hours one week and four hours the next week, it just has the average thirty-two and we're looking at what, five months?
Yes, sir.
If we didn't change the line item, they kept it like it was as part-time, which is what we have. And then during the budget season, change it to full-time.
We currently have full-time.
And we have to, we have to create a line item.
We currently have full-time and we're asking to use that money to pay somebody who's probably not going to be working forty hours a week. So she's, we're budgeted for forty hours a week at nineteen forty-four. She's currently only working about twenty-four. And we're being told we can't pay her because it says.
Oh, yeah. So what does the auditor need us to do?
Well, first, we need to take care of the situation with the grant application. The grant application needs to be written in agreement with, or through many test.
The grant's already been approved. The grant was approved yesterday by ETCOG. They didn't give us all the funding we wanted. It was only for thirty-eight thousand dollars. The grant doesn't come in like to next budget year. So we can fix all this when we do the budget, at budget time, we can.
So the other issue that I really have about it was the, the putting it in at thirty-two dollars an hour for a part-time position and having, you know, it just didn't go through the right process. You know, for, for funding and asking for nineteen forty-four hour for full-time and then trying to get thirty-two dollars an hour just kind of put in there, that, that isn't.
Why, why was that done? Why was it done that way?
It was a mistake and we're not asking for it now. It's nineteen forty-four now.
No, that she, what did you?
Is it possible that we calculate out the nineteen forty-four at twenty-four hours a week to the end of, to the end of September and just move that amount of money from current, the current full-time position into a part-time position? That way, we're not changing the numbers that have already been allocated, but just move that amount of money that we need to the end of the year as a, a part-time. Would that?
Do we have to?
Okay.
What do we need to, how do we do that?
Well.
Does that?
That's a separate line item because we're not, not under the discussion.
Okay.
Just like Tom said, the grant application was amended after the fact. I also spoke to Stephanie Hefner. She said whatever comes out and once it hits higher than the last, then the amendment is made. It is not an issue with Ed Hall or the K-Grant, but with the grants to be able to go back because it's reimbursement like Thomas said. So it doesn't necessarily have to line up with what the application was submitted as. It has to line up with what actually happens. And the amendment is easy.
How much trouble is it to amend the application?
It's a process that has to go through the E-grants and through, through ETCOG when that budget year starts, the amendment is made.
And it's not, I mean.
It's not a process.
It, it's not a process. It's done in the reimbursement, like, like I get a grant through ETCOG for my victim assistance coordinator. Y'all approve it for us to apply every year. We never spend all that money. But, but it, because when you budget for it, you're just guessing how much, I guess it's a bad word, but you're predicting how much you're going to need for travel, how much you're going to need for office supplies and, and you never quite get there. But because it's a reimbursement grant, you don't have to amend. The application's already been approved. The, the whole grant's approved. You don't have to amend on the front. You, you do it on the back through the reimbursement.
They're going to reimburse you up to a point.
Correct. And if you don't spend it all, you just, as long as you don't send them a form saying you did, everything's fine.
But in this line item, all we're, all we're asking for is to grant the board the authority to make that determination of part-time full-time on this line item for our agenda.
The agenda item does not allow us to like budgeting and it's.
And I guess that's, I didn't anticipate that it would be a budget amendment. We have the money in the line item to pay. We're just asking to pay for less than forty hours a week.
I, I think we're in agreement, but this agenda item wasn't specific to that effect. So that's why we can't add that to our motion. So we can table this and bring it back the next commissioner court meeting or next special meeting. If that, that works, okay.
Do we need to make some payment or something?
The issue, because I'm getting feedback that she's currently working in this position, but it's not authorized. We're not paying that. Right now, she's only supposed to be working at part-time as a JP clerk because of the issue with the full-time versus the part-time. And we don't have hours going through the clock in and clock out right now. And he says that last week they were, you know, they weren't as, as we're working. They're kind of at the command. And I, I think it's just very important to have controls in place and that is.
So what do, what do we need to do? We, we have to have this position.
But, but if I make sure, I think this happened before Catherine heard here in her defense. Judge Shin came to y'all and asked you, can I use my part-time criminal clerk and my budget line item for my part-time criminal clerk because the state is requiring us to have this position and we don't have a person or the money for it? Can, can I use the line item for my part-time criminal clerk to pay the person to set it up? And you guys approved that. So I understand completely what Catherine's saying. But I believe Judge Shin came here to court and you guys approved using that line item for this position.
Temporarily.
For the ramping up of this position.
So if we, say we table this, what do we need to do? Because we have to have a position. And I think it's common sense in non-government world, what we need to do, we got to get it legal. So if we table it, we got, what do we need to do to make this happen?
Well, I think we can just go with status quo and still, because y'all approved, you didn't put, my, my memory is that you didn't put any end date on Judge Shin using his part-time criminal clerk money for that. Unless he's about to run out or something, we'll have to ask him. He's at a training, but we could just go status quo till the next commissioner's meeting and put in.
And if we can't go, then we'll just call a special meeting to address it.
Our, our auditor's office is shaken. Our auditor's office is not in agreement with something.
Okay, so when this, when we open this new account or whatever, we get money from contingency to create the budget for that.
Right.
And it was only for six months, full-time salary.
Right.
And that's it.
Right.
But we're not even going to use all that money because we're talking about.
For a full-time position.
Right. So the money's there. It's just, it's just the title.
Yes.
And that's, that's all it's not.
Right. So we just need, we just need to have a.
Right, so we just need, we just need to have a.
Lateral damage, like, there's gonna be some.
The youth diversion coordinator position, though, is not a clerk position. It, it has a lot of discretionary responsibilities. Uh, it would be more similar to a juvenile probation officer position.
Right.
Um, uh, it's, it's definitely not a clerk position.
So.
As far as responsibility.
I, I think we, we should table it for now and get into discussions with everybody to determine what the proper agenda item should be to move the, the money in part-time. Does that sound okay?
Judge Shin can be here instead of me.
So is there, is there a motion to table?
How quickly do you need it resolved?
I would think because of the issue with her doing some of the functions already, um, in addition to get it resolved sooner than.
Okay.
Who listed at a quarter, I wouldn't have done anybody, did not do a different function. Who listed as a deputy, aren't, or getting correctional. There's, there's no difference. You're supposed to, or in the vision that they've been.
All right, apparently the commissioner court agreed to allow this to happen. Okay, so the motion to table has been made by Commissioner Williams. Is there a second?
I'll see.
Commissioner Phillips, second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign, motion passed. We will, we will get this done right, uh, soon. Item number six, discuss considering awarding the road and bridge fuel bid for the contract period of June first twenty-five through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. So who's, who's doing this presentation?
Uh, you're on, one on, Judge Fuel Bids first.
Yeah, I see it. Number six?
Yeah, I think it's material.
Fuel bid, no. I did it, but I think I didn't.
What'd you say?
Fuel bid. Fuel bid.
That time of year, guys, just to get y'all's approval on awarding those for the lowest bids for our fuel and materials. And this one is for the fuel bids. So um, it looks like often petroleum is the lowest bidder as far as the fuel bill. They were the ones that currently hold the contract for that. Um, another one was disqualified and another one chose not to bid, so often petroleum is the lowest bidder on your bet. So we just need y'all to agree to award the lowest fair.
Which is often?
I haven't had any trouble with them.
I'm motion.
A second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Barton, second by Commissioner Curtis.
I'm the same guy I was last week.
Is there any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Item number seven, discuss considering eroding the road and bridge material bids to the contract period of May first, twenty-twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. You're up.
I'm up. All right, do y'all want to go through each one or has everybody pretty much looked over?
I've got a question. Uh, Sustainable Pavement got the lowest bid on this and.
What's the product?
On, uh, cold mix. I'm on cold mix here. And it is made out of shingles. And I don't think we're talking about apples to apples when it comes to the materials made between, I don't know anything about Austin Asphalt, but Longview Asphalt, who is currently has the bid, uh, there's no shingles, it's rock and, and other, other materials, no shingles. So I don't, I don't think they're the same product, and I think they're both here today. Uh, I don't think you're comparing apples to apples here because it, it's a totally different mix.
And according to the local government code, often reject any and all bids. You can also, I know in the past, we have, um, awarded it to two different companies. Um, in order to do that, if you're not gonna accept the lowest bid as the only person, you have to bring that company in and discuss, you know, whatever you have with them. I know John Collins is here from Sustainable Pavement to, um, talk about products or whatever you had questions on, so he would likely come up.
Sure.
Sure, don't worry, Stan. Uh, good morning, everybody. My name's John Collins. I'm president of Sustainable Pavement Technologies. We've worked with the county for the last few years, uh, with the late Commissioner Melton, uh, with previous Commissioner Three, uh, Keith Pearson. Uh, it actually doesn't have shingles in it. It's got recycled asphalt pavement, so millions that are crushed in size. Um, it's, we've usually proposed that as an alternative cold mix, so it's not the same thing as what goes through a hot mix plant. And we use a cold mixing plant. We don't add any heat. Uh, it's got six to nine months stockpile ability. Doesn't have shingles in it unless commissioner, we, we do recycle shingles as well in Dallas and Fort Worth. We've utilized that material in certain mixed designs, but this is something we do with Tech Dot, uh, here in Paris, Atlanta District and Marilla District as well. Um, it's something we use just with materials that are available that are an alternative to traditional paving, just traditional hot mixing, cold mix made through a hot mix plant. Um, I've got specifications and testing protocol that we go through to, to do this. If you lay it in the blade, if you lay it in the paper. And, uh, I definitely think it's something that can be considered alongside these other alternatives. Uh, there are certainly price differences, performance differences, stockpile ability differences that we think can be weighed and utilized in different circumstances. Got sample materials with me. If any commissioners need to see the material that we are, are talking about here, again, we have examples of this used in the county. Uh, I know, uh, former foreman for, for precinct two, Daryl Easily uh, laid miles and miles of this material. Uh, talked to him last week. I wish him well in his retirement, although I think you guys are probably very, 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 very clear here and there. But, um, yeah, it has precedent both here in this, in this Van Zand County, um, with Commissioner Pearson in particular, he was here, he had material millions available that he needed to do something with. We came and actually brought a plant onsite to custom produce material that it could then go, go lay within the county. So that's what our, our proposal includes. Again, I've got additional details and I've got material samples if we need to follow up. Thank you all.
Where, where is your plant at? Where, how far is your plant?
Uh, our, our closest facility is in Dallas.
So is that a problem logistically trucking? I mean, like.
Is it a problem? It's what we were paying. Uh, so we would, we, we shouldn't turn around to job sites, to live on, to live on, from Dallas. Uh, certainly it's not next door. Uh, if you have alternative in our, our position, and so but we've, we've, we've gotten around those logistic challenges, but it's not going next door. It's not going in circles. It's not going to.
Well, I would like, and this is my opinion, just my precinct, uh, you know, I've never used it, but I know with what we're using now, it's working. And, uh, and I like it and I don't wanna change it. And like you said, Nicole, and if you do both bids and you know, if you, if you have a, a long road that gets all sun with no shade, you know, this, this might be something um, to hold up, because I, I've heard that from, from Virgil and from Keith. It, um, in the sun, it does well, but in the shade, it doesn't, and on curves, it doesn't. And me personally, I would, you know, if we give, give, reward both of them the bid and, and we have our choice. Hey, you know, on this road, we wanna use this. On this road, do we wanna use this? It would give us a little bit of, of flexibility, but, uh.
Has both of them your meaning, Sustainable Pavement and Longview Asphalt?
Yes. That would be precinct's force, uh, recommendation.
You know, I, I think as far as precinct three, I would, I would agree with Brandon. I would like the choice too. Because I, I feel like that, uh, my material I'm using for one job is working very well. And I have just changed not long ago to this material and it's working very well. And I don't have a problem with having a choice uh, to be able to use it in different situations.
I need to make a motion for that.
Yeah. We're thinking so to accept both bids.
Well, I'd make.
For that particular product.
I would make a motion to accept both bids on cold mix from Sustainable Asphalt and Longview, I mean Sustainable Pavement and Longview Asphalt. Uh, and what about everything else?
Everything else was, was fine. I just, when I started researching the products, I was like, that's, that's the only question I really had was, uh.
Yeah, everything else is for the lowest bidder will be on that summation page. That's gonna tell you, you know, who, who's on what product there was, um, on all sand. And this is for precinct three only, so all sand for all precincts, um, delivered Longview Asphalt got it, but for precinct three only, Texas Material is the same price. So according to the bids, we could award precinct three to get all sand from either Texas Materials delivered or Longview Asphalt. So we would need to, y'all to decide on that as well. If that's okay. Being that it's the lowest bid and then the same thing for recycled fresh concrete inch and a quarter. Um, Woodroom Construction actually has the delivered for everybody. And then Precinct Two only also has the same project with Big City Fresh Concrete in the same scenario. So Big City and Woodroom can do the recycled fresh concrete for Precinct Two. So as long as you're okay with the summation page, then.
On, on the fresh concrete, I have a question on that. Uh, would it be on, on it? I think, and I don't understand how, I guess I'd have to find out from him or you might can answer. How the mine is actually a dollar higher than Precinct Two.
Um, the recycled fresh concrete?
I think I'm right on that.
Is it the, is it the size?
It's just probably the distance would be my guess, how they.
But I would, from kind of what I've checked in, two's farther than three's.
In my inch and a quarter, inch and three quarter was, was a dollar. Yeah, two, two's thirty-six, three's thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Oh, you must say.
Yeah. Two, two is thirty-six dollars and mine's thirty-seven.
Just, just reverse them.
And I should be supposed to.
That's something you would have to bring them to the point and ask. I mean, you would have to reject that particular bid for precinct on that product only for your precinct and then bring them back in. And if, if you reject it, then you're possibly having to go out for rebid completely to the public, you know, as far as doing a new notice and asking for a new bid.
What did it, what did he's doing effectively, Cole?
Uh, the materials go in May first.
I mean, I know we're just talking twenty-five dollars a load, but at the same time, I just got five hundred ton delivered. You know, so we're looking at five hundred dollars.
Tell me about the, uh, so you're guaranteeing there's no shingle mix in that? In your product? Yes, sir.
Yes.
No shingles. How did you, what, where, where did that come from and like? Somebody just took.
Internet, I found it on the internet, on their website.
Yeah, so, so, uh, we are a recycled asphalt country. This is our website. We did it in two thousand eight. I haven't, uh, taken the time to update our website, but we, we focus on shingle recycling, uh, including Longview Asphalt. We supply shingles, topics, that's all under sale all over the country. Uh, and that was a big part of our business and that part we grew. And we also have other parts of the business, so with recycled cold mix, it's strictly wrapped. Um, we have two counties that have requested us to use shingles and add the money to it. We knew that our specification is not combined.
What do you grind that, what do you grind that, those shingles down to? What's the, the aggregate, the size of the aggregate?
Yeah, it's, it's two days in the largest, but it's the most, although, so it's, it's pretty mild. A lot of, any, it's, it's very, very fine. So it's like almost in the middle filler sand and a black sand.
It's not, well, shingles are ninety-five percent asphalt, aren't they? Close to that?
Not ninety-five, no. No, they lost twenty percent.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do y'all have y'all's on lab?
Uh, no, we use outside lab. No, uh, so we have field testing we do, but anything we use in the lab is, is there a, or until, uh, testing.
If I brought you a sample of something, could you make it?
Um, another thing I have.
If I can go back to my rock.
I wasn't through, I wasn't through with asphalt.
Well, I wasn't through with my concrete either. I'm trying to figure out.
And this is being submitted. You either need to accept it or you need to reject it.
Need to reject it because it may put a burden on everybody, but I don't.
You're just one vote.
Huh?
You're just one vote.
Okay, just give it.
No, it's, it needs to be corrected.
I mean, I think it does.
It's, it's a mistake. It's probably got me a mistake. I mean, I would think it would be, just common sense to it. It's farther to his yards than yours.
I would, I would think, yeah, from what I can find.
Can we reject one part of the bid?
But, but it may cause, it may cause, you said, come back and rebid the whole thing.
We may have to go out for rebid on your precinct only for that particular product.
Well, can you? Can we table that section and let us call and make sure it may, we think it's mistake and then just come back?
Problem is, it's a submitted bid that was a sealed bid and original, so you can't let them change their bid.
Okay.
Even if they go down, even if they go down, you can't change it?
If it goes down, they have to come to commissioner's court and present their reasoning for, you know, a cost decrease or a cost increase. They'd have to bring it to court. So that's something that y'all will have to have them come into court to handle on that.
I'm good doing whatever you want to do. You want to. Well, I mean, I don't wanna cause a problem for everybody. You know what I'm saying? And us have to go back out and rebid. So.
I mean, it's not gonna cause a problem for everybody. It's gonna cause a problem for your precinct on that product.
So what, what I'm understanding is if I call him and talk to him, he cannot change that.
He cannot change this. He cannot change the bid he's already submitted. We cannot allow him to change that. Just like there was another company that did not write their bid on the appropriate line. And when I reached out in regards to something else as far as their distance from the county, so I can let everybody know, since there's a lot of new people. They were like, I'm sorry, you know, I wrote it on the wrong line and can we give you a new one? I can't accept a new one. It's a sealed bid. You know, we've already opened them. It was a sealed bid. There's no change in that, and this is gonna be the same way.
Do we have to approve it today? It's, there's nothing, there's no recourse. We don't have any recourse in it then. Unless we'd re-submit.
Yeah, nothing can change.
Nothing can change, is it?
And the whole thing.
We can reject it and have them re-submit.
We can go out for rebid on that particular product. And we did that last year with some products. But we can do it strictly, y'all can vote as a board to do it strictly for precinct three or for everybody.
Yes, I'm gonna ask that we reject. Now, y'all, it's a, yeah, on that, yes.
It's an three quarter fresh concrete.
So recycled fresh concrete inch and a quarter for precinct three.
Is it inch and four or inch?
It's a three quarters, Nicole.
Or is it?
No, inch and a quarter recycled fresh concrete inch and a quarter is precinct three at thirty-seven, where precinct two was thirty-six. It's the same price for the, um, recycled inch and three quarters.
Oh, well, they've done the same thing on inch and three quarter off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you want to reject that bid for your precinct's other products.
I guess you can just vote on it.
Make a motion.
I mean, if that's what you wanna do, I mean, if you're gonna do it for the inch and a quarter, do it, you might as well do it for the three quarters. So it's the same principle.
Right, right.
They'll just have to rebid all the crushed concrete.
Just, ju- just in mine or all of them of us?
Whatever y'all choose. You can do your precinct only. You can choose to reject that bid only for your precinct. And everybody else still collects their costs and we can go out for rebid on your precinct.
Let's keep it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm making much more do that, what she said.
Make a motion to reject the bid.
From the inch and quarter and the inch and three quarter.
Recycle.
I'll second that.
Okay. But, we, we, you're only gonna do one motion.
Yeah, that's.
For agenda, agenda item, so we kinda need to include all of these.
Okay, so, so you're.
Yeah, so, uh.
So I need my motion if we approve everything except for that one item.
Right, so rescind that motion.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
To.
Okay, Brandon also motioned at the beginning, so are you rescinding or starting?
I mean, that's, that's what I wanna do, uh. You know, I, I, I've seen some of their product and of course, you know, I've seen Longview Asphalt's product. And I see advantages to both.
But, you know, I've seen disadvantages too and, and I think.
You like accept both bids?
Yes, I want to accept both.
Before we make any motions, I need y'all to make a decision only on motions. Last year the court um. Rejected all beds period, everybody wasn't using that, but I do need y'all to either. Reject or accept both, or tell me which one you want as the lowest bidder on a motion.
Is that company out of Mount Pleasant got the lost bid? I think they did, didn't they? What's it called? Um, it's not basic.
One is from Austin and one is from Shepherd.
What's it under?
Emulsion.
Yeah, there it is, emulsion, huh?
That tab, yeah.
Well, if I use less than fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to have it anyways, right?
Correct. And that's a product that does not.
I think I'm almost got a tech truck, right?
But I don't, I don't use it. It's that oil, yeah.
It's a, it's an adhesive for the new, new material to bond to the old. I'm going to use some, but I'm not using fifty thousand dollars worth of.
And I think that's why the court decided last year to just reject all the bids on that period because nobody was using that, you know, the threshold amount, so.
Mitch, you're the one that, you're basically the only one who uses it.
Right.
So whatever you want to do.
Well, how many subjects are, what, what are we, what are we talking about? We talking about asphalt, rock, or emulsion, or all of it? Do we need to put it all in one motion?
We got it all.
Somebody write that out. Let's see, start, let's start over, okay.
Start with cold mix.
Okay, so the cold mix, we're going to do both.
Except, I would like to do both.
The rock, we're gonna.
We need to explain who was both.
I want to do sustainable pavement, Longview asphalt.
Okay, for the cold mix.
For the rock, the crushed concrete?
Recycled fresh concrete inch and a quarter and inch and a three quarter for precinct three.
We're going to reject that.
Reject that.
Reject those bids for precinct three.
We're just rejecting all bids.
And reject all emotion bids.
Well, who uses it besides me?
And then accept ours.
All right.
But we're going to word it.
Uh, the motion would be to accept both bids uh from sustainable pavement and Longview asphalt for gold.
Cold mix.
Cold mix to reject the bids for recycled contract and reject the bids for emulsion.
Concrete.
Concrete.
We're rejecting the bid for precinct three for the con, all crushed concrete and we're rejecting all emotional bids.
Okay. You got that?
That's clear. It's absolutely clear.
So I've motioned what we just said.
Okay.
You know, I second that motion, what we just said.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, all opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider. Authorizing the county judge to sign a pro-rated tobacco settlement, settlement distribution expense statement for calendar year. Twenty twenty-four filing.
We just, it just gave my knowledge of that mistake in that, so. Michelle's going to just explain to you real quick, um, because we, we do still want the, um. You know, the authorizing for you to sign it, but it's amended, there's an amended version.
Okay. The corrected version, okay. Okay. So is there a motion to accept the amended version of the uh pro-rated tobacco settlement distribution expense statement? For calendar year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider approval of Canton vessel plat on Van Zandt County Road twenty-three, twenty-three. Located in precinct two.
Have anybody here? Canton vessel. They, they have complied with all of uh Mr. Abbott's requests, correct? And, and we have, uh, we've got all the plats, everything completed, and so, uh, based on. Their successful completion of our application process and providing us everything, uh, I submit this to the court for approval. And we'll make the motion to approve this plat.
I'll second that.
Okay. I- is this an RV? I couldn't, I couldn't tell from the drawing if it was for RVs or is it?
Canton vessel is that, uh, are those, are those pods?
Pods, yeah, okay. All right. Uh. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider approving balance of payment, a milestone payment. B point one point four to L three Harris for microwave hardware delivery. The uh initial uh, uh. Payment on this mi- milestone payment, we deducted two hundred and seventy-three thousand. Uh, dollars because uh the microwave equipment actually wasn't here yet. And uh, it has since been delivered and installed, and so we want to go ahead and pay that uh, that invoice.
And these are getting paid still by ARPA funds.
That is correct, yes. It's a part of the ARPA um. Contract for our grant. So is there a motion to approve the pain, the balance of milestone payment B point one. Point four, L three Harris for microwave hardware delivery?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, motion made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss and consider bank depositing contract. With Texas Bank and Trust to be renewed for two years for local government code one, one, six point zero two one.
That's mine. Our bank contract, the current we have expires later thirty-first of this year. And I've discussed it with Sandy before she left and. You can do, normally do it for four years, which you can do a two, that's what we were asking for. Because we've been having a lot of issues with our financial package, like we said, as you know, we talked about this, well, I'd rather just. Do a two-year extension on our current contract till we get through all these issues we're having with our financial package. And then now, uh, she, she's here, the current owner, and I asked her about it, she agreed, because she's. Still trying to figure out a lot of stuff, so the easiest thing to do. Is to extend our current banking contract for two more years and in ten to two years, then we'll go out for bids for a four-year contract. So that's what we're asking, not just have the paperwork, which you should have a copy of it. That will, so I get back to the bank when we have. Not to approve it on the review, but I have to get approval from you to, to get a two-year extension before we proceed. That's what that is.
I'm motion to renew it.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Uh, uh, motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Phillips. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Uh, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number. Twelve, discuss, consider approval of investment policy for twenty twenty-five.
So, so man, uh, this is just. To my knowledge, this is the policy we've had ever since I've been here, it's just our investment policy and you're supposed to go before the commissioner's court. Once a year to get your approval for the investment policies. That's basically what this is. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any changes since I've been here. But each one of you should have a copy of it. To look at, but that's just our guidelines and what we're supposed to do for investment currently. We currently use a text pool and Texas classes who we use where we invest our money because they're, they're pools. And, and the same as you're, uh, she still do, but. The pool allows you to put money in, take money out, because we're always having to take money out and. If you do that with other things, you don't have that flexibility, you know, you get penalized for taking stuff out. So currently, we're using those two pools to kind of spread the money out a little bit. And it allows us, like I said, then right now, we just have to be putting a bunch of money in there because of all the tax money. But as time goes on, you know, toward the end of our fiscal year, our budget gets a little. And sometimes we have to take money out of there to pay some of the bills and stuff. That's why we've always used the, the pools and it's always very good way before I come here and so far, he's saying they always agree that. That's where we, it works the best for us. That's just, that's what we do, that's not saying that can't be changed, but. But that's just what, that's, this is the current policy we follow accounting for. And just like I said, it has come for commissioner's court every year. To get your approval. For the investment policy.
So is there a motion to approve the investment policy for twenty twenty-five?
I make motion.
Motion by, by Commissioner Phillips, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any further discussion? All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, consider authorizing county judge to sign a lease agreement. With Pitney Bowes, our current machine is uh, uh, which we've had for, I believe, five years. Is uh, going out of lease and we have a new agreement and I've been working with them on the type, type of equipment. That we'll get and then there is a, it is a, an online system where uh individual people in the uh. Employees in the county will be able to have an online account where they can go in and enter the information, they can actually physically print. A uh, a sheet that would have uh, uh, information, I'm not sure if it's exactly postage, but. Will have the ability to ship UPS, FedEx and other carriers. And uh, print out the, the way bill and put it on the document. And that would save us, I know we're, we're spending a lot of time going to box it up to uh ship things and this would allow us to do this internally. Plus, uh, it, it also has a new feature where we do quite a bit of registered mail, a little green card, return cards to verify that people are. Uh, received something that we sent to them and with this new system, it's all electronic, there is no green card issued. And uh, once you set it up and print it out, print out the document, put it in an envelope. Uh, the post office, when they scan it on delivery, then we are notified by email. Uh, and, and provided with a, a signature, all of it's going to be online and we don't have to rely on the green cards to uh. To follow up with, so, and that saves us, it also actually saves us for each registered mail, but dollar forty-eight. Uh, so, uh, even the, 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 it's, it's a, it's a pretty good deal. And uh, anyway, is, is there any, any other questions about the equipment or the lease? If not, is there a motion to uh authorize the county judge to sign a lease agreement with Pitney Bowes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is made, second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen. All right, Commissioner Phillips makes, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, looking at it about ten o'clock.
Yep.
Remedy. Thank you very much.
Hi, Nicole.
Hey.
Appreciate you. What's going on between, um? I didn't say it this morning. There a little tension there this morning?